Will the meeting please come to order? Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, has been provided by a notice published in the Home News Tribune on December 28, 2018, and posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 5, 2019. I would ask at this point you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, reuttering and just as strong.
Okay, Lillian, roll call.
Mr. Jerry.
Present.
Mr. Pipola.
Here.
Mr. Corret.
Here.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Here.
Mr. Saltes.
Here.
Mr. Peasy.
Here.
Mr. Khan is not present. Mr. Singh is not present. Mr. Danielle.
Here.
Mr. Reader.
Here.
Oh, he's here. Mr. Zing.
Ah, yes.
Attorney Rubin.
Here.
Mr. Bignell.
Here.
Mr. Carley.
Here.
Okay, on to resolutions. We have quite a number of resolutions. P-9-2019 Shopping Center Associates, the corner of Lafayette and Route 1.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve P-9-2019.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay. Lillian.
Mr. Jerry.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Pipola.
Yes.
Mr. Corret.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Saltes.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Peasy.
Yes.
Mr. Danielle.
Yes.
Mr. Reader.
Abstain.
Mr. Zing.
Ah, yes.
This resolution is approved.
Okay, the next resolution, P-10-2019 Primrose Schools, 23 Nevsky Street.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve P-10-2019.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, Lillian.
Mr. Jerry.
Yes.
Mr. Pipola.
Yes.
Mr. Corret.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Saltes.
Yes.
Mr. Peasy.
Yes.
Mr. Danielle.
Yes.
You can't vote on this one, Mr. Danielle. I think this is the one you left during the application. And then the one after this was the RG Edison Urban Rule you weren't here for. So neither of those two you can vote on.
I recuse, abstain.
Mr. Reader.
Abstain.
Mr. Zing.
Yes.
This resolution is approved.
Okay, the next one, P-11-2019 RG Edison Urban Renewal LLC, 2165 and 2205 Lincoln Highway.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution P-11-2019.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, Lillian.
Mr. Jerry.
Yes.
Mr. Pipola.
Yes.
Mr. Corret.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Saltes.
Abstain.
Mr. Peasy.
Ah, I already voted yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Danielle.
Abstain.
Mr. Reader.
Abstain.
Mr. Zing.
Yes.
This resolution is approved.
Okay, the next one, P-11-2018 RAS 33 LLC and P-11-2018.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution P-11-2018.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, Lillian.
Mr. Jerry.
Yes.
Mr. Pipola.
Yes.
Mr. Corret.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Saltes.
Yes.
Mr. Peasy.
Yes.
Mr. Danielle.
Abstain.
Mr. Reader.
Abstain.
Mr. Zing.
Yes.
This resolution is approved.
Okay, on to number five, P-5204 WNG Realty Easy Street.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution P-5204.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, Lillian.
Mr. Jerry.
Yes.
Mr. Pipola.
Yes.
Mr. Corret.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes, on the motion.
(inaudible)
Abstain.
Mr. Saltes.
Yes.
(inaudible)
Mr. Peasy.
Yes.
Mr. Danielle.
Yes.
Mr. Corret.
Yes.
Mr. Zing.
Abstain.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, the next one, P-18-2018 Summit Associates, 150 Fieldcrest Avenue.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution P-18-2018.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, Lillian.
Mr. Jerry.
Yes.
Mr. Pipola.
Yes.
Mr. Corret.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Saltes.
No.
Abstain.
Mr. Peasy.
Yes.
Mr. Danielle.
Yes.
Mr. Reader.
Yes.
Mr. Zing.
Abstain.
This resolution is approved.
Okay, and the last one on our long list of resolutions, P-19-2018 Summit Associates, 115 Newfield Avenue.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution P-19-2018.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, we have our second. Lillian.
Mr. Jerry.
Yes.
Mr. Pipola.
Yes.
Mr. Corret.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Saltes.
Abstain.
Mr. Peasy.
Yes.
Mr. Danielle.
Yes.
Mr. Reader.
Yes.
Mr. Zing.
Abstain.
This resolution is approved.
Now, we were going to skip around on the agenda. Under miscellaneous, number two, we have JFK Hospital is requesting an extension of time, P-18-09/10, P-28-04/05, and P-88-04/05.
Hi, good evening. My name is Wendy Berger from the law firm of Cole Schatz, here representing the applicant. I had the opportunity to speak with your counsel today, and although we gave a notice that it's extension of time, it's really kind of clarifying some of the resolutions that were adopted previously. And by statute, we did have an extension of time because you were also, and we are extensions by statutes that were granted, and then there was, you're in a superstorm sandy municipality, and that statute gave additional time by statute because you were in a superstorm sandy municipality, that's a tongue twister, and based upon that, that told the other approvals. And so now, we're able to extend the approvals that your resolution already extended, but doesn't clarify to what date. So the purpose is really to clarify that date today, and your resolutions had extended it, but the date wasn't clear. So if I'm not incorrect, Mr. Rubin, we talked about that based upon the tolling and the statute, the extension will now go to June 30, 2020.
Yeah, let me, so I can explain. Under the Permit Extension Act, certain counties who were affected by Superstorm Sandy, including Middlesex County, you can't hear me? Well, I don't know what else I can do. I'm talking into the microphone, were given an extra six months' extension under the Permit Extension Act, which otherwise would have expired on June 30, 2016. So under the Act, those extensions were granted until December 31, 2016, for those counties, Middlesex County being one of them. The Permit Extension Act also said that approvals then expire no more than six months after the expiration of the Permit Extension Act. So these approvals expired under the Permit Extension Act on June 30, 2017. In August of 2017, you granted a two-year extension, and then in April of 2018, you granted another one-year extension. Under Section 52A of the Miscellaneous Law, you can, you're only entitled to a total of three years of extensions, and since those three years of extensions have already been granted, it's just necessary to clarify when those three years expire. And those three years expire three years from June 31st, June 30, 2017, or June 30, 2020. And so it just needs to be put on the record that their extensions are good through June 30, 2020, and they can't get any more extensions. The law only allows three extensions. Just so everyone understands, those extensions don't mean that they can't build after that period, it simply means they're no longer protected from changes to the zoning ordinance. That's all that that extension does. Okay?
And for the record, we did put a notice in the newspaper that we were asking for extension, and we notified all property owners within two hundred feet.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Peasy.
Ah, is there any action from us tonight?
No, unless anybody has any questions or concerns about acknowledging that this extends them through June 30, 2020, that's all this really was necessary, is to clarify that because the resolution itself does not.
So we don't need to vote on this?
You do not need to vote on it because you've already granted the extensions.
Right. Some of those, the regulations that were extended by the, by the government were retroactive, and that's why the resolutions weren't necessarily clear all the time, so that's the purpose of this tonight.
And you're in agreement with that?
Yes, I am.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? It's been three, four years. What's, what's going on? Why don't you think it should be built by this time? What's going on?
Um, our client is looking at the plans. As you know, they were, there's been some change in the hospital, in that they're affiliated now with Hackensack University Hospital, so there's more administration and more people that are looking at it, and at the same time, regulations change in the Health Department also at the same time, but they are moving forward, otherwise they wouldn't have me come here tonight, and hopefully you'll see things moving ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Questions? Okay.
I thank you, and have a good summer.
Thanks, Wendy. Bye-bye.
You too. Okay, on our agenda, old business, there's none. On to new business. P-12-2019 FedEx Ground Package System, 25 to 53 Talmadge Road, Block 124, Lots 22.01
You can sit over here.
Oh, that makes it easier.
Guys. No, no, he can set up over there, but you and the...
I have a microphone.
Yeah.
I didn't even see it over there.
And your witnesses can start there. If they need to walk over there, the microphones can go with them.
Sure. So, um, Scott, do you want to come over to start, or do you want me to bring you a mic?
I'll bring my over here.
Okay.
So, good evening, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, members of the board. My name is Daniel Steinhegen. I'm an attorney at the law firm of BD Padavano, 50 Chestnut Ridge Road in Monval, New Jersey, on behalf of the applicant FedEx Ground Packaging Systems. The property that is the subject of the application is 25-53 Talmadge Road, it's Block 124, Lots 22.01 and 22.02. We are here on an application for amended site plan to modify the southern facade of the existing FedEx building to provide for roll-up garage doors, three of which are going to have ramps associated with them that will allow vehicles to pull inside the building for loading on the interior of the building, but there is no expansion of the building proposed. It's, it's just a change to the facade to help FedEx consolidate their operations, make the site operate more efficiently. I have two witnesses tonight, Scott Turner from Menlo Engineering and Larry Valenza from M&amp;H Architects. I ask that they be sworn in, and we'll go through their qualifications and hopefully get this...
So I swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and want it, and the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and spell it for the record, please.
Scott Turner, T-U-R-N-E-R, Menlo Engineering Associates, 261 Cleveland Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, 08904.
And you're licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am.
And you'll be giving testimony as to, as an engineer?
Correct, yes.
Okay, we'll accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we start, I have the affidavit of publication and notice. If you'd like me to mark it, or give it to the...
Generally don't mark it, just review it and keep it in the file.
So, Mr. Turner, can you give the board an overview of the site and what we're proposing to do? Sure, I'll mark. I have one exhibit that I plan on using. I'll mark it as A1. Fine. Can you describe that exhibit for us, please? Uh, this is an exhibit that was prepared by my office. It's entitled FedEx Ramp Doors Site Plan Exhibit, dated July 15, 2019. It's really a black and white copy of one of the plans that are in your packet. It's just been presented in a little different manner in terms of the shading in the areas where the proposed work is going to occur on the property. And for the record, just very quickly, the property is Block 124, Lot 22.01 and 22.02. Does contain 45.49 acres. It is an existing developed site, the FedEx facility that's located in the Revlon Property Redevelopment Zone that previously had procured all of their necessary permits for them to build and occupy this building. We're here for some very minor, in my opinion, site plan improvements along the southerly side of the existing building. All of the improvements occur on that side of the building. There are proposed to be 33 new overhead doors to be installed along that existing building facade. Three of those overhead doors will be drive-in ramp doors that'll be located in the southeast corner of the building, that will be used by FedEx vans to get in the building and do their loading operations inside the building, as opposed to having it all occur on the, on the outside in the, in the drive areas and the loading areas. The only other real change to the plan is to eliminate four of the existing trailer spaces that are on the southwest corner of the row of trailer parking spaces along the southerly property limits, and they will be converted just by way of striping into 15 adali spaces. There's no new increase in impervious coverage, no building coverage increases, we're not creating any new variances or waivers, and that's, that's the extent of the improvements. There'll be some concrete pad work to be done within the existing pavement area to accommodate the new overhead doors, and some prefabricated concrete ramps to get them into the building, again, all within the existing paved areas. Does the proposal, by modifying the southern facade, does it impact the number of truck spaces that are on the site? Uh, yeah, there's 40 existing dock spaces currently, so it will be modified slightly, yes. But in terms of the overall number of spaces, it complies with the requirements? Correct, yeah. There's, there's 322 spaces, vehicle spaces on the property currently, which will remain, and then there's just a slight modification to the overall number of truck dock spaces, but they are well in excess of what's needed to comply with the requirements. And can you give the board a, a little bit of background on why FedEx is doing what they're doing here? Uh, yeah, the, the reason is obviously the demand and what they need to in order to operate efficiently within the area, and in particularly with the drive-in doors, they really wanted to pull some of that loading operations from the outside of the building into the inside, and those van spaces and that, and that, and that, and that operation now that will occur in that southeast corner of the building will allow them to do everything internal, as opposed to having it go outside. Does the proposal to provide these loading facilities inside the building and on the side of the building result in any increase in the number of trucks that are going to be generated from the site that would necessitate additional permits from the DOT or some other entity that has jurisdiction? No, there's, uh, we, there was a traffic consultant retained by the client who drafted a letter, Dolan and Dean Associates, they did a letter report that was submitted to this board. It is dated... June, July 8. Yes, July 8, 2019. They did a study just to determine whether or not it, this proposed improvement met the threshold of requiring a modified DOT permit, and they've concluded that it does not. And that's because it's less than 100 trips? There's less than 100 trips, additional trips from the site, correct. Did Dolan and Dean discuss when they thought the trips that would be generated as a result of this modification would occur? Uh, yes, they did, and in their report, they indicated that the, the additional van trips entering and exiting would be during one particular hour in the day, and they would be occurring in the, in the midday during the week, not during the peak morning and evening hours. So the peak hour traffic from, from this modification would be less than? Correct, it wouldn't coincide with the morning and afternoon, evening peak hours. All right, so in addition to the, well, besides the changes that you've described, are there any other changes to the site that the board needs to be aware of, whether it's be stormwater, lighting, landscaping, utilities, anything of that nature? Nothing else has changed on the site, no. I, I have nothing further for Mr. Turner. I make a available for the board, to the board for questions, to the extent that there are. I will point out that we did get a letter from Bignell Planning Associates, and it is dated July 2, 2019. We did have a chance to review that letter, and we will comply with all of the requirements within that report.
Can we, Madam Chair?
Yes.
To do that, though, the last comment wants to know the status of the ongoing environmental cleanup on that property. Do you have any information on that?
Uh, yeah, a little bit. I'm not intimately familiar with it, but it's going to continue to ongoing, and they're going to monitor the site as, as they need to in order to comply with the current environmental cleanup that's going on.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Councilman.
One, you're putting in ramps to drive, to drive the vans in, so you can load the vans inside, right?
Correct.
How far inside the building are you going to be pulling with the vans? And have you made any accommodations for the carbon dioxide if the cars are idling inside the building?
Yeah, I, I am not someone that can answer that, but we do have the architect here that can help answer that question for you.
Okay, and you don't know how far in they're going to be?
I, I don't. I think the architect would be better suited to answer that.
And you mentioned precast ramps they're going to put in there?
Precast concrete ramps, yes, correct, right on top of the existing pads that are there currently, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the architect.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Danielle.
Um, this is on Mr. Bignell's comments. This is more on appearance issues, so since you came back here, we get another bite at the apple. If you go down there, the vegetation, they're growing all over that chain link fence, I don't know whether it's your fence or not, or the post office, but I can't do anything with the post office, but I can do something with you, so we would like that cleaned up.
We, we agree to do that. We'll take care of it.
Yeah, to the extent it's on our property, we'll, we'll take care of it. Well, if it's not on your property, but it's hanging over on your property, you know...
Then if, if, if vegetation is on the property, we'll take care of it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Bignell.
Not to interrupt, but they agreed that the last time they were here, too, and it's still there, so that's why we put it in the report.
The last time was 2012, so it's seven years.
It's been a long time. Well, they did a, they did a revised, they did a revised plan in 2016, that's when they agreed to do it.
Okay.
So...
So, that's kind of important to be on this. And then the other thing is, Hank, do we have a schedule of dead trees and dying trees and shade trees? Can we get, can we get a list of that?
Their land is in very good shape. I don't believe that there's much, you know, nothing major out there.
So your comment here is just...
They just do some housekeeping, that's all. Their property's well kept.
All right, so, see, I'm okay with, but do you see what we can do on that? Your place looks great, except for that part, which is...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Um, Mr. Carley, have you looked at, at the traffic study? Are you, have you received the traffic study, and is it acceptable?
No, I have not. The traffic study is dated July 8, which is last Monday. We have not received a, a copy of it. We did issue a report on June 3, 2019, that I believe Lillian's going up to make copies for the board for in advance of the TAC. As, as Mr. Turner testified, this is almost an equal trade of trailer storage spaces with ramps, so I don't anticipate that there'll be a tremendous impact on traffic related to it. You're talking about trading five trailer storage spaces for three drive-in ramps. So I would concur, not having seen it, but having listened to the conclusions of Ms. Dolan's report, I'd concur with it. I would like to get a copy of it, though, just so, yeah, the board has a complete record.
We'll make sure you get a copy, then, Mr. Carley.
Thank you.
I can submit to the board and to the, to the board's consultants, if you'd like now.
Yes, if you have copies.
I do.
Yes.
I don't know if I have enough for everyone.
Right, we can share.
Do we have a group list in there?
I have one question for the witnesses.
Yes.
Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner.
Since we're passing that out, can you mark that as A2?
Um, Mr. Turner.
Yes.
You said that there are four existing dock spaces, and they will be reduced. Could you quantify the reduction for me?
Uh, yes, the, the 40 along the southerly wall will be reduced by the five trailer spaces and replaced with the three, so there'll be a total of 33, or 30 of drive-in van accessible, so we're going to lose two spaces.
So you're going from 30 to, 40 to 38?
Correct, yes. And I'll confirm that once the architect comes up, because I just want to make sure my numbers are right, because we did go through some changes in terms of the number of spaces, and the architect may be able to confirm that if, if he knows. And then there's also the four spaces... That are being lost, they're trailer spaces, though they're not dock spaces. Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yes, Mr. Carley.
Yeah, again, getting back to, uh, I said that... I'm sorry. Getting back to Ms. Dolan's report, her report is, is focused, and it relates pretty narrowly to the requirement to amend the property's DOT access permit, and based on the observation that no building is being added or subtracted, she concludes that such amendment or new permit would not be required, and again, I agree with that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Just looking at your report here to the state, it says a maximum of 24 vans entering and 24 vans exiting during one hour of the day. How, how many trips are going to be generated by these vans during the entire day? They're going to be coming back and picking up, and coming back and picking up?
I, I don't have that answer with me personally, but I think there are already van spaces that are already going, going, going to and from that existing facility. This is just a way to get them into, into the building, as opposed to being on the outside.
And do you know, was the reason for this because of the weather conditions, to get them inside so they can be loaded easier?
I, I don't know, sir, if that's the specific reason why they would do it, and it's FedEx, I mean, I, they probably have a pretty good procedure down at this point, so maybe just the way they want to run this facility. I don't know.
So basically, what you're saying is there's not going to be any more additional trips trips than the vans that are there now?
Correct, that is my assessment, my understanding, correct.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Daniel?
I have a question on this letter, so the last time Christie Todd Whitman was governor was at least 10 to 15 years ago, um, so how do I know, and this letter's not even dated, that Ms. Dolan cites, uh, I don't know whether this was a letter written to, is this still good, can, who's going to attest that this is still good law?
You're talking about the, the two-page attachment that's attached to the back of it?
Yeah, is this still good law?
I believe it is, I, I don't think Ms. Dolan would have attached it to her letter if it wasn't.
Well, it, it's, it's, I'm not sure, it's just a commissioner's view on something, like it was written...
She, she does cite, uh, the code requirement in her...
She cites the code, and this is her opinion, right, this is just her opinion, she's not here for us to question her, right?
She, she's not.
No, this is not her opinion, that, this is, this is a code requirement in terms of the DOT access code, you have to evaluate
Right.
...a particular site, and in the first portion of her letter, she indicates the code section, uh, and it, it, I'll just read a portion of it, under the provisions of the State Highway Access Management Code, and she cites the code, applicants must obtain new access permits for any of the enumerated items on the attached NJDOT letter, so they still refer to that letter.
Right.
Specifically, even if driveways are not modified, which ours are not, a new permit is required if there is a significant increase in traffic defined as 100 or more peak hour trips and 10% increase in daily traffic.
Okay.
And that's written into the code.
And, right, and so who's, who's testifying here that says we're not going to have that?
So, Mr. Turner's testifying to it, I mean, he's an engineer, and I think he's entitled to rely on the opinion of another engineer to that respect, to, to answer your question, the, the, the section of the administrative code, which is controlled by the Department of Transportation, hasn't changed, it's a, a major act's permitted.
I'll take your word for that.
And, I mean, I guess, I guess the attorney could advise, or the engineer?
So, what you're saying is we're not going to have, it's, it's a two-part test, it's an and test, right, it's both, 10%?
Correct, it's 10%.
So, we're not going, and, and increase of 100?
And 10% increase, correct.
So, we're not going to, so, and the reason why we're doing this is, what, the reason why we're putting the holes in the wall and putting ramps is, again, what is the reason?
Uh, it's, it's for the productivity and the, the requirements of FedEx themselves specifically, they must need it to meet the demands in this area.
Right, so if the demands increase, is there, is there a possibility that we could have 100 more peak trips?
No, there, as I go through this letter, what I said before about the additional, the van spaces, I, I misspoke, there are 48 additional van spaces in the peak hour, 24 in, 24 out, as I read through this again, as you folks were talking, that's the additional trips based on the van requirement that she has analyzed and based on FedEx's needs.
Okay.
I apologize for that miscommunication.
That's fine, that's where I got confused, so...
Correct, and I'm sorry for that.
Alright, you know, we're happy you're here, we want you to stay here, we just want to make sure we comply with the law, and that we don't need to get this permit, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I don't know if you're ready for your next witness?
I am, do you want to have questions from the public, if there are any firsts for him, or?
Oh, wait a second, Mr. Saltes has a comment?
I just, I just have one question, I'm looking at Mr. Bignell's, um, Number 13 recommendations, and it, it talks to, um, submission of documentation with approval from Middlesex County Planning Board, Freehold Soil Conservation District, and all outside agencies, what, what other approvals are you going to have to go for before you can file for this?
No other outside agencies, we'll have to go to Middlesex County Planning Board for a letter of no jurisdiction, we don't meet the threshold for Freehold Soil Conservation District, we already spoke about the NJDOT, there are no other applicable outside agency permits to obtain.
I think in a resolution at the end, we should, we should put something in here that they don't, they're not going to use Freehold Soil, they're not going to use...
Well, that's up to them, we don't, we, I'm just going to say, well, any other governmental approvals, they have to determine which ones, though, it's not for us to do that.
Because upstairs, I heard there's always an issue with, go get this, go get that, go get that.
They gotta, they gotta work that out with them, we can't make that call, it's not under our jurisdiction to decide which ones they do and don't.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay, so...
Yeah, usually I don't open the, usually I let you...
We'll do it at the end?
Yeah.
Okay, so our, my next, our, FedEx's next witness is Larry Valenza, um, I don't know, Larry, have you been here before?
May I swear you're in first?
Oh.
Do you solemnly swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Larry Valenza, V.A.L.E.N.Z.A., representing M+H Architects, 2150 Shoots Road, St. Louis, Missouri.
Larry, can you give the board the benefit of your educational professional experience, please?
Yeah, I'm a licensed architect, um, in the state of New Jersey, I've been licensed, my initial state of licensure is Missouri, uh, 31 years ago, I've done probably 30 million square feet of industrial distribution space in the state of New Jersey.
Have you testified before this board before?
Not this board.
Have you testified before other land use boards in the state of New Jersey?
Um, Franklin, um, Cranberry, South Brunswick, Piscataway.
How recently was the last one you were at?
About a month ago.
Were you qualified as an expert before that board?
I was.
And we will, we will accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, building on, uh, what Mr. Turner testified to, can you explain to the board what we're doing?
Sure.
A3, please.
So, this is sheet A3.1, which was in the packet that was submitted.
You need to mark that as A3.
A3. So, there's not a lot of, of architecture here, um, we're adding 10 dock doors at the west end of the south wall, and 20 dock doors at the east end of the south wall, the ones at the, at the west end are, are down there, this is the west end of the south wall, this is the east portion of the south wall, and we're doing these 20 additional doors here, and then these are the three drive-in doors with the modular ramps, um, at, at the far east end, excuse me, east end of the south wall, so, um, the other, the only other things we're doing on the, the south wall is adding a dock canopy, and it matches the one that was added to the north wall previously, exactly, the dock doors will match the existing dock doors, so there's really nothing visually different from what's there already or what's on the other side of the building, and then, we're also adding louvers, intake louvers on the south wall, four, four foot by four foot, there's 16 of them evenly spaced down the wall, and on the north wall, we're doing exhaust louvers that are six feet by six feet, and they're also evenly spaced down the wall, and the reason for those is to get air changes through the building for human comfort and ventilation in the summertime. And in answer to the question about the, the vans pulling in, they pull all the way into the building and they close the doors behind them, but they don't keep the vans running during loading, so they pull in, they shut the motor off, they load the van, they start the van back up, they pull back out again, so...
And, to answer the question about ventilation, is, are these louvers designed to help with that, with any exhaust streams from the vehicles, or is there some other system in addition?
They will, what they do is, the ones on the south side, or the ones on the north side exhaust air, and when they do, it opens louvers on the south side to bring fresh air in, um, it's mostly used for cooling in the summertime, the volume of these buildings is so large that you don't generate enough exhaust to really make much of a difference in there, but it will draw air across the facility to exhaust any of the inside air, it's for air changes, um, gets fresh air in, the, the buildings get pretty hot in the summertime.
Can, can you speak to the question about how far in, I know you said they pull all the way in, but what's the, the distance between the building wall and the point where the, the vehicles are going to go?
I don't know exactly, that's an operational thing that FedEx would have to answer, but typically, that first bay, what they call the speed bay, is a little deeper than the other bay, the internal bays of the building, and I think they just pull into that, to that speed, they're not driving way into the building, they just come into that speed bay, the loading bay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman?
I'd like to know, is there going to be any bollards or anything there to stop these, for instance, if the, doesn't stop, is there going to be anything in there to stop these cars, or parking bumpers, anything inside there?
Um, there, there are none planned, it's a big open space, there's 60 feet when you pull in the door to the first column line, so there's really nothing to hit unless you really overshoot it, um...
Well, I'm just thinking for safety of the, the workers.
The columns are usually protected along there with, with column protectors, um, I don't know honestly whether these columns have those protectors on it, or if there's racking right up against them, um, at this point in time, but they could be protected with some, uh, column wrap, but there's, currently, there's no plan to...
Because they're pulling up the ramp, right, and going into the, so they're giving it the gas to get up the ramp and into the building, and then once they're in the building, you want to make sure that they stop somewhere along the way, if they don't, the workers aren't going to be protected in.
Right, it, it's, um, it's a pretty gentle ramp, it's like a handicap ramp, steepness, um, it, the end of the, the dock apron is 60 feet from the building, so you're going up four feet over 60 feet, so it's not a real steep
Okay.
...ramp where they really have to floor it to get up there or anything.
Right, okay.
Larry, do you have anything else to add, or?
That's, I think I've covered everything that we're doing.
So, I, I have nothing further for Mr. Valenza, I make him available to the board.
Anyone else?
Can you just confirm the number of docks that will remain along the south wall, you're losing two, is that correct, is that, can you confirm that, I just want to be able to put in the resolution, you're going from 40 to 38, if that's accurate?
No, we're adding docks.
Yeah, I, I did count them as, uh, the discussion was going on, and there are a total of, because of the additional docks we're adding on that south wall, this is not in total for the entire building, but currently, right now, we are proposing 70 exit dock doors on the southerly side plus three drive-in doors, so a total of 73 currently, and I know that plan had the dock doors and the locations were, were moving around and changing slightly, which is why I was a little hesitant, but that is the number, including the existing and the proposed dock doors.
How many do you have now?
40.
So, you're going from 40 to 73?
Yes, correct.
So, not reduced, but actually increased?
No, we're reducing the dock doors and the location that the drive-in ramps are going in, but there's going to be an increase overall in dock spaces.
The net addition is 33.
Is that still accurate?
Okay, anyone else, questions? At this point, then, I'm usually open to the public, if there's anyone from the public would like to speak as to this application, please come forward, your name and address.
Madam Chair, seeing no one come forward, I'd like to make a motion, we close public portion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve this application, uh, with the following conditions, one, and first and foremost, adherence and acceptance, I believe, from all the recommendations that have been, the latest recommendations from Mr. Bignell and his letter of July 2nd, 2019, and DNR from the letter dated June 3rd, 2019, which I believe the applicant has agreed to, uh, I would also, I think the, the question came up about safety inside, is there, can, can I ask?
I suspect that that's really a code enforcement issue.
Mr. Saltes said he will call that out on the drawing.
Okay, that takes care of that, I would also ask that somehow this issue of the, uh, cleaning of the area, we talked about the fencing and all that, we've talked about it before, and it seems to be taking a while to do, may I ask Mr. Bignell to, prior to, uh, final approval of this, to take a, sign off on that, to make sure that that cleanup has taken place at that basis?
If the resolution says it's a condition of approval, I will certainly enforce it.
I would add that as a condition of approval, and last and finally, just to reinforce that all prior conditions of the previously approved, uh, application are not being changed, and with this amended plan should remain in effect.
Okay.
And finally, as always, we would add the proviso that if there are any changes, or you go forward, any changes to this approved application, you need to come back to this board to get a revised approval.
Absolutely.
And, can I just add to yours, um, when Mr. Bignell goes out to the site to inspect, um, if you could just see which, the cleanup also means replacing the trees that are dead, and...
Yeah, but he didn't think there was that bad.
And the shrubs that are along the fence there that are dead and dying, and, okay. Mr. Bignell will inspect them.
Understood.
Having said that, Madam Chair, I'd like to second his motion.
Okay, Lillian?
Mr. Regier.
Yes, to approve?
Mr. Pipola.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Zandelsky?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Saltes?
Yes.
Mr. Kezey?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel? Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Zing?
Yes.
This application is approved.
Thank you very much for your time, have a good evening.
Okay, is the court reporter for the next one, or?
Yeah, she is.
Okay, so, let me read the next one, come forward, but usually the court reporter needs to take a little bit of time to get ready, we have amended P2 dash 2017, Camp Kilmer, A Urban Renewal Associate, Associates, Road 2, Block 3.13, and then, did you need to take a break, or are you... If you need a break, let us know.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Thomas F. Kelso, on behalf of the applicant, Camp Kilmer, A Urban Renewal Associates LLC, we're pleased to be before you this evening, seeking an amended preliminary and final site plan approval, uh, to provide changes to the previously approved 172-unit affordable housing development, which was approved by resolution of this planning board on March 13th, 2017, uh, the project's located on 4.26 acre lot, located on the former Camp Kilmer property, and is designated as Block 3E, Lot 3.013 on the current tax map, uh, the subject property's located in the Camp Kilmer redevelopment area, uh, my client is the designated redeveloper for this project, uh, and the project, as it's being proposed and amended this evening, is in conformance with all the requirements of the Camp Kilmer redevelopment plan, uh, the applicant's seeking a series of changes to the site plan, uh, they do not require any variances or design waivers, uh, those changes are as follows, first, a revision of the building layout to remove the townhouse units which, with exterior entries in favor of all flat units, uh, number two, the relocation of stormwater detention system from the rear of Building A to the parking lot within the center of the site, uh, number three, the relocation of the site sign on the Phase A portion of the project from the southern side of the site, entrance to the northern side, four, the removal of the exterior dumpster enclosure, number five, the relocation of parking stalls to remain within the required setback, and finally, a minor modifications to the sidewalks, uh, my intent is to call three witnesses, uh, in order to support the application, first, Mr. Jacob Fisher, Regional Vice President for the applicant and Penrose Properties, which is the parent company, uh, Mr. Greg Delmalooski, the, uh, Civil Engineer from Atlantic Engineering, who will provide details of the engineering changes, and finally, Mr. Joseph Healy, our Licensed Architect from WRT Architects, uh, to provide the changes associated with the architectural changes to the building, uh, with that as, uh, a background and brief explanation of the application, I would call Mr. Jacob Fisher, uh, for testimony.
Do you solemnly swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell it for the record.
My name is Jacob Fisher, F.I.S.H.I.R.
Uh, Mr. Fisher, you are, I think, Regional Vice President for Penrose Properties, I believe?
That's correct.
Well, in that capacity, you're familiar with the project, the previously, the previous approvals that were received in 2017, and the proposed changes to the plan as it's being proposed today, is that correct?
I am very familiar, I've been involved with this project since, uh, early 2016.
Uh, if you could give the, the board a general overview, uh, of the project, where we are, uh, and, uh, you know, kind of give us an update, since I know we're fairly close to commencing, and then give us a little background as to why these changes are being proposed this evening.
Uh, sure, so, um, Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you very much for having us here this evening, um, so, Penrose is a developer of multifamily housing, we've been in business for 40 years, and we've been involved with the township on this development for probably the past three and a half years, starting with the initial selection, uh, process, which lasted through 2016, and we were selected at the end of 2016, um, the proposed project, which is a 100% affordable development, um, and is a key component of the township's fair share settlement, will consist of 172 units of family housing in two buildings, uh, the first 86 units have been, have been approved and financed through the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency, and we've actually been able to, um, recently close on the financing for that, so we are ready to proceed. As we were going through the process of working towards our closing and trying to make numbers work and pulling in various sources of funding, we found that we needed to make some minor modifications to the plans. These really fall into, and Mr. Kelso articulated them, but these fall into the category of trying to reduce the square footage of the building slightly, and also simplify the structure, really in order to help save costs. We are working, and I'm sure you're all aware, in a high and rising construction cost environment. So controlling costs was a key consideration. In doing that, we were able to preserve everything about the original intent of the building in terms of the unit mix and numbers of ones, twos, and three bedrooms, and everything else that is part of the township's fair share settlement is preserved. So, as I mentioned, we have closed, we are ready to get going on it, but need to come back for a formalization of these changes so that we're able to pull our building permit and start working.
Just one question for, to make sure the board understands. There is a slight reduction in, I think, the overall square footage of the building, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that driven by any changes in the unit sizes, or was it driven by other factors?
So as noted in one of the professional letters, there is a reduction from around fifteen-hundred to thirteen-something in the size of the three-bedroom units. And the reason for that is that those three-bedroom units were initially townhouses, so they were two stories. So that square footage reduction really represents the circulation space and stairways, internal stairways that would have been in those units, but the actual living space is unchanged.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions from Mr. Fisher.
Okay, councilman?
Yes. You said you reduced the space on the square footage on the two-bedroom, only the two bedrooms?
No, the threes.
Oh, the three bedrooms?
Correct.
So the two bedrooms and the one bedrooms will be the same square footage?
Virtually unchanged.
Okay. And is there a substantial savings, cost savings, by eliminating some space there for you guys?
There was, and it was enough to get the construction contract down to the number that we needed it to be at to close.
And this is for Phase 1, right, of the project?
Correct. And the Phase, but the Phase 2 building, which was part of that initial approval, and is the second eighty-six units, that will be the mirror image of what we have now on Phase 1.
So whatever changes you make here now, it will apply also to the Phase 2 of the project?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peasy?
I have a question for attorney. Mike?
Yeah.
This cost savings, does that affect the integrity of the bid in any form? The competition of the bid, bidding?
The bid of whom?
The bid, well, this originally, I imagine, Penrose was the winner.
I'm sorry, they're having trouble hearing you.
Well, it was a private conversation, I'm only kidding. My question was, does this cost savings affect the integrity of the bidding for the competition who bided on this?
This all occurred before I was here, but generally speaking, in most municipalities, not all, redevelopment plans have concept plans attached to them. They're approved by the governing body when they sign off on the redevelopment agreement. They know what's going to be built. And redevelopment agreements generally say that any modifications to those concept plans have to come back to the governing body, and an amended redevelopment agreement has to be executed, acknowledging and accepting any changes to the concept plan that had been previously approved. I think you can ask the question as to whether that process has occurred, but as to whether or not it affects their rights to build and everything, that's between the municipality and them. And if they're here, I suspect that they're okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just to expand on that, again, when a redevelopment concept is approved by the redevelopment authority, in this case, the council, they're doing it literally as a concept. I mean, the detailed plans and specifications are still required to be developed after they're designated and after, you know, they have gone through that process. Otherwise, they wouldn't spend all that money on detail of engineering and architectural. What matters is that the concept is followed in general terms, and that the planning board has approved the plan, which it did in 2017, and the finding being made that everything is in conformance with the plan. Today, we sit here, even with these changes, we're in conformance with the redevelopment plan. And as Jacob's indicated, there are very minor changes to the living space. The rest of that is design of whether or not, you know, you have to go to the second floor, or whatever. But that was not, that detail would not be something that would be a requirement that comes out of the redevelopment plan, it's more general than that. It's really up to the planning board to decide whether these changes are, you know, are consistent with what you would normally look at for site plan purposes. Access, engineering design, architectural features, things like that.
I agree with all that. The only caveat I would say to that is if the municipality, the governing body, believed that the changes to this plan so deviated from what they had approved as a concept plan when they entered into redevelopment agreement, would be incumbent upon them to call out the redevelopers and say, hey, wait a second, we don't really like this, this isn't what we agreed to, this is what we originally approved. And that's really between the governing body and the developer.
Yes, if that would have happened, that would have happened by now, when they were first submitted to the township. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Not seeing any other questions?
Thank you. At this time, I have a call, my next witness, Mr. Greg Domaluski.
Do you solemnly swear a firm testimony about to give you the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell for the record.
My name is Gregory Domaluski. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I work for Midlandic Engineering, and my name is spelled Greg Domaluski, D-O-M-A-L-E-W-S-K-I.
Mr. Domaluski, again, you're a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And in that capacity, you're familiar with the modifications from an engineering perspective that were before the board this evening?
Yes, I am.
And to follow how the board typically would ask the questions, have you testified previously in Edison County?
I have testified before this board previously, yes.
And you've been accepted as a licensed professional?
I was.
And we'll accept you as an expert tonight as well?
Thank you.
Greg, if you could, and I know, I guess you're going to go to the other side of the room with where the boards are, but if you could just go through the engineering modifications that are being requested of the board this evening?
Sure. So first, I'm going to bring up two exhibits here, and I'll mark. I have the existing rendering that we presented at the last board hearing. So this is the Kilmer 3 rendering dated February 15th, 2017, I'm sorry. And I also have the Kilmer 3 rendering dated 7/15/19. And I'll mark one as A1, and the other as A2, if that's okay?
Esther, why don't you move to the right so you can see? Your left, actually.
You can come sit at the table if you want.
How's that better?
So am I fine to mark these as A1 and A2?
TV okay? Yeah, TV's perfect, just Esther.
Am I okay to mark these as A1 and A2?
Yes.
Mr. Rubin?
Yeah.
Okay, so as you look at the renderings here, you may be asking yourself, what's the difference is? They look the same. And ultimately, they do. And that's, the general intent of the site is the same. We still have the same entry off Road 2. We still have the same L-building configurations. We still have the same parking configurations, the same drive aisle configurations. Really, the overall sites, they're the same, with some minor changes that Mr. Kelso had talked about. The first change being the architectural changes, which Mr. Healy will present in a little later. But for buildings, for the Phase A and Phase B buildings, in the front of the buildings here that were on the internal parking lot, each of the townhouses had their individual entrances that entered off the parking lot. And now that's changed to one single entry for the building, where all residents will come into the corner of the building and enter, and then go to their units from there. So the exterior doors were all eliminated, as well as the walkways associated with each of those doorways. And you can't see it on the rendering, but the stormwater detention system was moved from the north and the east side of Phase A building. On the rendering, that's planned right on the rendering, and the bottom of the rendering here on Phase A. So what that was originally designed as was oversized pipe to handle our stormwater and meet our reductions. And in lieu of that, we dropped that pipe size down to a smaller-sized pipe, and because of the angle of influence of the foundations of the buildings that we're putting in. So what's happening was the footing design versus the, versus that proposed pipe, it was an angle such that the excavation would have undermined that foundation, would have caused some deeper foundations, all that. So as part of that, we decided to relocate the stormwater detention system into the center of the site. The reductions, it still meets the existing flows off the site, and the intent of the stormwater remains the same throughout the site.
Could you show us where that's going to be?
Sure. So the proposed detention system is going to be in the center parking area, right here in the site. It moves it all a little bit further from the building, and will allow that still to hold some stormwater back and meet the flows off the site at this time.
So you're the engineer, right?
Yes.
So in your opinion, the column A on the left, that system, you're saying what's going to happen in B is there's no difference, or very little difference?
No, very little difference, the reduction, the numbers still are less than what was existing. So the stormwater tie-in point for our system is down here in the southern corner of the property. And the flows coming off the site in the old design versus the current design are still less than what currently flows to that corner before construction, or before development of the site.
And it's a lot cheaper.
It's a lot easier to build, construction-wise, yes. And if you had a problem with that pipe in the future, it's much easier to go in and access that pipe, rather than having to go back behind a building and potentially under foundations to access it.
Okay.
The site sign was relocated from the northwest side of the entry of the site, along Road 2, I'm sorry, the northwest side, over to the northeast side. And the reason for that was strictly just the contractor wanted to install that sign as part of the Phase A portion of the project, and not have to deal with it during the construction of Phase B, because as they're building the Phase B building, you're going to have, this will be an active construction zone on the side of the parking lot. Number one, for a little bit of material storage during construction over there, and, you know, equipment being moved around, and excavation, everything like that. They didn't want to have to basically either undermine the sign or damage the sign during the construction of Phase B. So it was recommended to move it to Phase A. It's the reason for the sign location change.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peasy?
Greg, I apologize, I want to go back to the storm sewer, the-
Sure.
In the corner. You increased the size of the holding. The-
The size of the system?
Size of the system.
So before, there was, I can't remember offhand, whether it was 36 or 48-inch pipe behind Building A? Okay. And in order to accommodate that, because there's a lot of linear footage back here along the building. So what we did was we replaced that with rows of 24-inch pipe under the parking lot. So we have a little bit-
It's all going to a storm sewer, a major storm sewer?
It's all going to a swell down here in the southern portion of the site?
A swell?
Yeah.
So requires, requires percolation of sorts within your system?
No, it's not, it does not require the infiltration. Okay. So what we do is we meet the, so right now, currently, the site discharges to that southern corner, and our numbers do reduce, I'll give you the numbers here. So for the 100-year storm event, pre-designed, there's 25.6 CFS that discharge to the southern corner. And post-development, there is 25.17 CFS, so a little less. About a half CFS differential existing to propose after the system's designed and built. And that's through the storage pipe, as well as the outlet structure control, which slows the flow of water out of the system.
Okay, and Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peasy?
I'd like to ask Mr. Carley, is you reviewed this design change?
Yes, the design change was first proposed, I believe, in December of 2018. And the stormwater management report was revised at that time to complement the plans that you see in front of you. And essentially, looking at the two characteristics that I look at in terms of discharge to that swell, the peak flows, and also water quality, they're virtually unchanged. So even though the pipe was modified, the volume is unchanged. The type of pipe and the length of the pipe has changed, but the volume that's stored in the basin is unchanged. I tend to agree with Mr. Domaluski in terms of maintenance, having it in the center of the property is probably a better approach to long-term maintenance. That pipe's going to be under that ground for 100 years or so. And every year, someone's going to have to poke their nose in it. So it's better to have it out in front than hidden behind a building.
Thank you.
Another change we have to the site plan is the elimination of the dumpster enclosure. So down the southern end of the property here, between Building A and B, there used to be an exterior dumpster enclosure. The purpose of that was for the townhouse residents would have to come out of their units because they didn't have access to the main portion of the building. They'd come out their front door, walk their trash down to the dumpster enclosure. Now that all of the units are located internal to the building with access to the main lobby area, there's going to be internal trash collection that goes then to a compactor and dumpster, which will be wheeled out on collection days for pickup by a collection company.
Who's going to, who's going to transport all this trash through the building?
There's a site super that will be on-site.
So are people going to, so these are apartments, like a town?
Mr. Healy could probably testify to the way the systems work, and he's going to come up next. But there's, from my understanding, there's internal collections points, which then drop it down into the trash room, which then deposits it into the bins, which then are rolled out by management.
Madam Chair? Oh, wait, we have a question, Mr. Peasy?
I see the plan view, do you have any elevations to show what was and what is?
Yes, Mr. Healy present them next, architecture of the buildings. Thank you. But as far as site plan changes go, that's the, that's the limit of our site plan changes that we needed to perform in order to accommodate the building change.
So I have a question. So if there was, God forbid, there was a fire, the people could just run out into the parking lot. Now, if there's a fire, what happens? Where do they have to go?
Mr. Healy can testify to that, but I believe there's emergency doors throughout the corridors, you know, stairwells and such of that. And then, you know, the same way, the second and third floors would have to evacuate in the same exact manner.
Yes, councilman?
I want to know, the last time, when you guys came in for your original approval, there was an issue with the access road, as to getting access from that main road. Was that ever dealt with?
I can answer that question for you, councilman? The, the actual road, which is Road 2, is actually privately owned by the Middlesex County VOTech School Board. And even though, I think, for most residents who go through there, they think it's a public road, but it actually isn't. So we were able to reach an agreement with the County VOTech Board, wherein we received a permanent easement to utilize Road 2. And there was some consideration for that, as well as some improvements that we're going to be responsible for with regard to curbing and sidewalk and so forth. And there's, we're not actually the only affordable housing developer who's actually been dealing with this, with the VOTech. And frankly, they're very happy to get a little money in order to help maintain the roadway, because frankly, they do it all themselves at taxpayer expense.
And who will be doing the snow plowing and the salting and all of that stuff?
They still will be doing that, the County VOTech. But what we, as well as other developers, have contributed financially to that, as well as doing certain improvements to the road to minimize any of their actual maintenance responsibilities for paving, things like that.
But they'll still be-
But they'll still be doing the on-site-
Correct.
-snow plowing and salting and whatever has to be done.
That's my understanding, but I have a feeling by the time we're done, we'll probably be helping with that too.
We'll be what?
Helping with that too.
Oh, oh.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bignell.
Through you and in follow-up to Mr. Sandalski's question, in the prior resolution of approval, it said, item 1C, a certificate of occupancy will not be issued until there's a signed access and road maintenance agreement for Road 2. So you need to kind of clean that language up because that's a little different to what Mr. Kelso just said.
Well, I have the actual documents recorded, so we'll provide it to you.
Well, but they need to change their condition. If you're supposed to be responsible for the road and you're not going to be just paying for it, that's something different. So you're not going to be able to give me that signed document and I'm not going to be able to sign off.
I think we as a town just want to make sure that somebody's doing that, that it's not going to be an issue. You know, whose responsibility is to maintain that road?
Yeah, my recollection of the condition was it generally described the fact that we didn't have right to be on that road and we had to enter into an understanding with the VOTEC in order to be able to access it, and we've done that.
But it says you don't get a certificate of occupancy, so I don't want you to get this thing built and all of a sudden we're fighting with the language on the road. I just want you to clear it up here tonight so the board's satisfied and you guys are satisfied and there's no trouble for Mr. Saltes issuing a CFO at the time because that's what the resolution of approval says.
And the, the other issue that I wanted to make sure that we straighten out is, I think with the first project, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bignell, there was supposed to be a shuttle bus of some sort-
Yeah, we were just going to add that to it. That was item 1B of the resolution. It says a certificate of occupancy will not be issued until there is a signed contract for shuttle bus transportation services for the residents three times per week. And they volunteered to do that. That wasn't something that we forced them to do. They volunteered to do that because the first guys, we, I don't even think they're in compliance yet and there, that's a problem. But-
That's a, that's a, a big need for those people.
Absolutely.
Because they're out in no man's land there.
And they're coming to council meetings saying that there's no way for these people to get to food stores and stuff. And that's, we tried to head off at the pass way back when, but, so someone needs to go out and enforce that, quite frankly.
That's it.
And also, just to touch two points on your letter, Mr. Bignell. Item D, the height of the lighting, I know one of the details did mention a 30-foot, 2-foot maximum pole height. That was just a detail for the design of the foundation of those light poles. The light poles actually are 15-foot pole height with the light mounted on top of that, so they're under the 20-foot mounting height or the 20-foot height of the lights as well.
How about bicycle racks?
Bicycle racks, we do that?
Bicycle racks, yes. We have bicycle racks on the plans.
I couldn't find them. Where, where are they? Just, I searched around for them.
There's one, there's a bicycle rack down here on the corner of Building A.
Is it labeled as such or is it just a square on the plan?
I'll double-check and make sure that is labeled.
That's why, I, I think I saw the squares, but I wasn't sure what they were, so.
I'll clarify.
All right.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
And then also the, for the signs, there is, there's going to be the three-way finding signs, all under five square foot each. Just want to get that on the record as well.
And can we talk about phasing real quick so we just get that squared away so there's no confusion with the engineering department?
Sure.
Like you're going to do Phase 1, you're going to be building Phase 1 with the parking area, then when that's completed, at some point, you'll do the pha-
There, there's going to be a portion of the parking lot built with Phase A, which will include enough spaces for a one-to-one ratio of units to parking stalls.
Can you put a line through the plan at some point so we know exactly when we're upstairs looking at this thing?
Yeah, I can, I can put a plan, but basically it's going to be the parking stalls along the entryway, the middle drive aisle, and then the parking stalls will come around and then the drive, the drive aisle around Phase A here will be constructed as well.
So, Madam Chair?
Come in, move the site and go back out.
Great. If that could be a condition of approval, so it's in the resolution saying Phase, a Phase 1 plan and a Phase 2 plan, whatever they propose, I, I have no, no problems with, but it just makes it easier upstairs to figure out what they're doing.
I don't, I don't understand. I mean, I mean, I-
They may build Phase 1 and never build Phase 2.
I understand there's building Phase 1 and Phase 2, but I mean, for us to dictate which, how much roadway they have to build in Phase 1, do we really-
No, no.
-be doing that?
That's not what I'm saying. We're not dictating. I'm just saying let him decide what he's going to show in Phase 1 and, and provides what the plan is Phase 1.
We have that in the site plan set there, if you look through it. There's broken up phasing plans for Phase A versus B in the site plan set currently.
That's arguable.
What, what is the parking ratio now with the entire site?
One to one. 172 basis-
So we're doing, so we're doing the same thing?
Yep.
And that was the reason we needed the shuttle bus too? Because a lot of these people do not have their own vehicles, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Pipola, did you have a question?
Mr. Bignell, I just want to clarify, the issue on the access road maintenance agreement, we need to change. I'm not quite sure I understand the change that we need to make to the original.
Well, the original said that they were supposed to maintain the road and his testimony tonight was that they're going to pay a fee to the public, to the, the school to maintain the road.
I, if I can clarify, I, I don't think the intent of the original condition was for this board to require us to maintain it. It was really for us to work out an easement agreement with the VOTEC. The VOTEC is not requiring us to maintain the road or do the snow plowing, but rather they preferred for us to pay money upfront and to do sidewalk. That's really for them to determine. And Hank, I don't think the original language was intended to dictate that. I think it was just, at that point, to say there needs to be some clarification because the roadway is private.
Well, I think the planning board was looking for a, they didn't care who did it, just make sure it was getting done, that's all. So if you can provide that, I just want to make sure the language says that so there's no confusion when we're signing off on this thing, that's all.
Yeah, actually, the agreement said, is because we deal with lenders, the agreement said if they don't do it, we have the right to go in and do it. So it's actually turned around a little bit differently, so. We'll provide a copy of this agreement for your-
Just, just as long as the board is satisfied, Mr. Kelso, that's all I'm concerned about.
Mr. Kelso, I, I just thought, because I came, like, I wasn't at the first, what was it, Rivendell, where the guy's not providing the van and, and we were nervous about like who was going to snow plow. So if you're going to pay for it, that's great, but how do we make sure it gets done?
But they do it now.
What's that?
They do it now because they have to plow it because it's the roadway that accesses the VOTEC school. So they, the, the VOTEC has to maintain the roadway for snow plowing purposes. We're not the only one that are on that road and it's the main access to the school.
I guess the question might come up is if the school is canceled, if they don't have school that day, they're going to still have to do the plowing and make sure-
They do now.
Okay. No, no, what I'm saying is-
And where's that obligation? Where's that written down? Is that between the VOTEC and the township?
Because even though it's a private road, it's a publicly accessed road so that they routinely snow plow the road because other people access it. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not one in favor of trying to dictate to the County of VOTEC something that they do routinely and they've done for, for years and years.
So why are you paying for it then?
Because we needed the easement. It was opportunity.
Yeah, I thought the last time, Madam Chair, through you, I thought the last time was we didn't really know who, who maintained the road. That's where the discussion started. So now we've got more information, so that makes a little more sense, what Mr. Kelso was saying. But when we first had this conversation, we didn't know who owned the road and the board was making sure the road was maintained, that's all.
Yeah. Any other questions for me?
Yes.
Mr. Reader, you have a-
Go ahead. To change the topic, I, I don't remember the first part of this approval process, but is there another access for emergency vehicles down on the south side that like, just for additional access? Right now, I only have one access for any vehicle.
Single, single access point to the site. Sounds like Dorm Woods, remember that?
Dorm Woods. Dorm Woods is the only one I have.
No. This says-
Do we need the fire department to approve that or?
John, are you, is John Saltes, is that okay? I mean, is that a one-way access?
If I just might, Greg, ask you one or two more questions because we've also identified the relocation of the parking stalls required, I mean, required in the setback and also the modification of the sidewalks. Could you just explain that?
Yeah, sure. So, so between the old site design and the new site design, the bumpouts along the inside corner of the Building A had changed a little bit as well as B. So in order to make sure that the parking stalls were at least 10 feet away from those bumpouts, we had to move and relocate a couple of stalls here along the building entryway. So we did that. And then the changes to the sidewalks are simply the removal of the sidewalks that used to lead up. If you look on the old rendering here, there's a number of sidewalks that went up to those front doors at each of those townhouse units. They were all removed from the site plan once it went into the, the standard units internal to the building. Those walkways up to the building were no longer required, so they were removed from the site plan as well.
That's all I have for Greg.
Okay, I don't see any other questions or comments. Your next witness.
Thank you. At this time, I call Mr. Joseph Healy for testimony.
You saw me swear affirm the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and spell for the record.
Joseph Healy, H-E-A-L-Y. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey, managing principal of Wallace, Robertson, Todd, and the principal in charge of this project since its inception.
Ms. Healy, have you ever testified before this board?
Not before this board.
Have you testified before other boards, zoning boards or planning boards?
Yes.
In New Jersey?
Yes.
I would offer-
And recently, you've testified?
Uh, within the last year.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you.
Ms. Healy, if you would then, could you go through the architectural changes that have, I know have been referred to already? Feel free to use the exhibits that you have and we'll have to mark them to the extent you do.
So, before I refer to the exhibits, just to again reiterate in summary, really the, you know, the materials, what I'll demonstrate is the materials, the appearance, the number of units, the mix of the units, really the overall intent of the project has not changed from the beginning. And as Mr. Fisher had testified, when we started to develop the project, you know, for cost and constructibility reasons, we made this modification, which the easiest way to describe it would be, if you can imagine a two-story townhouse with an internal stair in it that was tucked in underneath the upper levels of the project itself. So those are the townhouses that had direct entry from the outside of the building. We, we reconfigured those three-bedroom units so that they were the identical to, in the, in the sense of how you access them, to the units on the upper floors of the building, which is to say that there's a, a central corridor that's connected by elevators and stairs and then you would go into the units which are spread along the perimeter of the project itself. And so that reconfiguration is what had eliminated the outside access to those units. So the two exhibits that I have before you is the, and I guess we had exhibit one and two.
Eight, three.
So this will be three and four. So the, the board here that I'm marking three is the zoning plan board resubmission drawing stated July 1, 2019. And then the, the rendering that's here, which I'll mark exhibit four, is the, the original design, which had the townhouse units that were tucked in under the building. So generally, if you can see from, from your vantage point, what we, what we did is we kept the same material palette. We tried to, you know, repeat the same rhythm and the same pattern of the materials so that the project would look essentially identical between the two. The main difference would be, and you'd really have to zoom in to, to sort of see this, is that where the townhouses were placed under the building, there was a slight recess to the face of the building. And in the revised design, we actually maintained that same kind of face to that lower level of the building so that we could keep the appearance the same, but it's a, it's a much more flush condition relative to the outside of the building itself. That's really the, the primary change. And as was already mentioned earlier, by reconfiguring those townhouses into being a single-level unit accessed by the corridor, we were able to eliminate the stairs and some of the circulation within the unit because it was a two-level, a two-level unit before. So that's how we were able to reduce the square footage of the building, which again, as Mr. Fisher had testified, had financial benefits to the project by eliminating that square footage.
Mr. Reader, do you have a comment?
Yeah. First of all, how many exits do you have from the building? The main corridor has how many emergency exits or main exit?
So I'll just, to illustrate that point, I'm just taking the, the fourth floor plan of the project itself, so the highest level of the building. We have an exit stair at each end of the double-loaded corridor, which runs down the center spine of the project itself, and then two elevators, which for this building type would be probably the primary way that individuals will come up to the upper levels and access their units. So we have the two exit stairs located at these ends.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Peasey?
Yes. How many units are included in that, in that L?
At the, at the, the maximum number of units on any given floor is 23. So it varies by floor because we, we do reduce the number of units at some of the corners of the project to, you know, help the building sort of step down in its size and its scale.
Madam Chair?
Yes? Mr. Corret?
On the building, you have stairwells on both ends of the building, elevators in the middle. In a fire condition, the elevators are out. So everybody would have to exit to one end of the hallway or the other end.
Yeah.
What's the distance between those stairwells?
The, the building is a fully sprinkled building, so it meets all of the life safety codes relative to the travel distances. The, the dead-end condition is usually where the most concern is and that's, that's less than the, you know, the maximum dead-end corridor condition at the end of both of the corridor areas.
Just to follow up on, on the question, how many units of the three, three-bedroom units, which, you know, assuming they have the most children in, in the event of a fire emergency, how many of those units now don't have access to the outside where they were before?
All of the three-bedroom units are accessed internally now.
Right. How many of those are there in this, in this building? How many three bedrooms?
We have 19 units are on the ground floor. I have to check the, the matrix, one second. So it, it varies by floor level. We have five three-bedroom units on the first floor, another six on the second floor, six on the third floor, and five on the fourth floor.
So I guess my, my question is, you as the professional architect, are you concerned with the diminished access that those residents will have now, now that we took away their individual entrances?
No. The, the configuration of the building as it is right now is actually a fairly, a much more typical arrangement of, you know, this, this type of an apartment-type building itself. So it does meet all of the life safety codes related to the fire rating of, of floor or structure, separation between units, things of that nature, and the sprinkler protection itself.
Madam Chair? So you're saying they're going to be accessed internally, the three bedrooms. Are they still going to be two levels or one level? Are they going to be a flat?
One level, they're a flat.
So they're going to be one level?
Correct.
So they're going to be taking up more square footage on one level in order to be the, in order to make it the three bedroom, correct?
In, in reality, if you total the square footage that was on the two levels to make up this townhouse, the, by putting it at one level, it's actually less square footage than the, than the, the combined two floors that was required before because it was a vertical townhouse.
Okay. So are the bedrooms a little smaller?
Uh, no, the, basically the units are configured in a way where they, as you might imagine, they stretch along the outside of the perimeter of the project itself. So a three-bedroom unit might, might exist in a, in a dimension that large, so there's actually three bedrooms and a living space along the outside wall.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
The other, the only other point, I guess I wanted to bring up relative to the outside of the building is that in the, in the original design, you can see that the stone treatment that we had, we changed it to a different material at the upper level of the building itself. And in the previous scheme, that was a metal panel material. And we've made the same material change, has been maintained on the new rendering, but it's a, what they would call sort of a vertical battened vinyl material instead, again for cost reasons. I mean, I could go into a little bit more detail, you know, we used to have, right in the main entry area in the corner, we had three outside balconies at the second, third, and fourth floor. In the revised design, we have one outside balcony at the second floor, and then the balconies at the third and fourth floor are really more shallow, what we call Juliette balconies, where there would be, you know, a large window opening, but no way to actually move outside at that point. And I think one of the other questions that had come up about the trash system, so just to explain that to you as well. Well, this is a, this second floor drawing itself. What we do is, basically we have a trash chute on the upper floors of the building where the residents will be able to go through the corridor, gain access to the trash chute, send the trash down, and then we have a trash room at the lower level where the trash compactor is located and the ability to store that trash until the pickup time.
Is there gonna be any recycling in this building?
Yes, there will be.
Does that mean yes, with a separate chute, or what?
Well, I just deferred to Mr. Fisher, sometimes we use buy sorters and sometimes-
We'll have a buy sorter so that the same chute can accommodate both recyclables and trash.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Greg, if I could just ask you one question, just in response to item six in Mr. Bignell's report, and that is, does this plan satisfy the architectural design and rooftop mechanical screening requirements of the redevelopment plan?
Yes, it does.
I thank you.
And how does it satisfy? What did you do differently?
We didn't do anything differently between the schemes. We just, we have a, what we would call a parapet around the building.
Right.
So that wall height that you see in the original rendering has been maintained in the revised rendering, and the units are within that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just had another question about your garbage. So this is gonna be similar to units that you would see in New York City, where they have a, you know, a trash chute where they throw their garbage in and that type of thing. In these rooms, is there a ventilation system in there to keep-
Yes.
-the smell out of the building? Because people tend to not be the neatest in the world when they're doing this type of thing, so. And then it'll be the super's job to collect all this stuff in the trash room and then take it out to whoever has to go out there?
Yes. Well, it goes into a compactor, and the compactor ties to a container, and so there's, at some point when the container's full, they'll switch it over to the spare container, and then on the collection day, those will be brought out for pickup.
So, and then how will they handle the cardboard stuff? How will that be handled?
That's the, I believe the buy sorter is what would, and, you know, you indicate what kind of material it'll have, and then it has a diverter down at the bottom, which tends to sort out the material that way.
I mean, like, if you have a big box, you're supposed to throw that down the chute, a big box like that?
I don't know about, I don't really, I'm not that involved in the day-to-day operation of the building, so maybe Mr. Fisher could respond to that.
Councilman, just for larger recyclables like boxes, which obviously are more and more a common occurrence in our Amazon-fueled apartment complexes, people will drop their boxes within. We ask them to break them down, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, drop them within the trash rooms, and then our maintenance super, who by the way lives on site, will make rounds during the day to both make sure that recyclables that can't go down the chute are pulled out of the chute to be brought to the main trash room, and that those trash rooms are kept clean.
So the super's gonna have additional responsibilities, it's gonna be, he's gonna have garbage collection as one of his responsibilities?
Well, so the building will be staffed, both with a full-time superintendent, and a building this size will also have a porter, so we'll have multiple people on site, and their responsibilities are keeping it clean and making sure that the garbage is flowing out is almost, you know, job one in a rental community, as you're aware.
Okay. Thank you.
That completes my questioning and our presentation.
Mr. Kelso had a question on Mr. Bignell's item F. I assume you have no problem with that, item F about the landscaping?
No, that's fine. Maintain the existing landscaping.
Okay, Mr. Corret, do you have any items from your report?
My report was, it's a Friday- The 12th basically is advisory to the board. It describes the proposed amendments. It did mention road two, which I think has been fleshed out. And, you know, I would just recommend that the board, as a condition of any action today, just reiterate the conditions of the March 2017 approval, just to make sure that they're reaffirmed.
Yes, Mr. Peasey?
Is that the previous approval for this cover the traffic analysis? The prediction of the pickup or traffic for that exit?
Yeah, there was, our initial approval had all that type of testimony, all the traffic testimony and others.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I think at this point then I'd open to the public. If there's anyone who would like to speak as to this application, please come forward, your name and address. I'm not seeing anyone.
Have we seen anyone come forward? I make a motion that we close public portion?
Does anyone have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the requested changes to the previously approved layout as outlined in Greg Donaluski's memorandum to Carl O'Brien, which lists the changes. I recommend that we approve these with the following conditions. First and foremost is, as always, the adherence to the recommendations, which I believe the applicant has agreed to in the latest letters from Mr. Bignell dated July 11, 2019, and from DNR dated Friday, July 12. I would also add to the conditions that the request that we have a phase one parking plan and a phase two parking plan illustrated so we can differentiate those two projects if they don't go on coincidentally. Also that, as indicated, no changes to the previously March 2017 approval and conditions that were set at that time be maintained with the slight clarification of 1-C, which we talked about for road number two, and the maintenance and the responsibility of that maintenance be more clearly specified as opposed to what was listed in the previous approval. Finally, then, our usual condition that any additional, or if there are any additional changes that we request or the demand that they, you come back before this board and as you have done this time, and present those changes to us for approval.
Did you say about the shuttle?
The shuttle is listed in our previous agreements under, as illustrated in Mr. Bignell's memo, which is clarified under, I believe, 1.B. And that still holds.
And the modification of the detention, or are you including that?
Those are listed in the Mr. Donaluski's memo to Carl O'Brien, the six specific changes that were requested for this alteration to the application.
And that's from November 6, 2018?
That is dated November 6, 2018.
Okay, do I have, yeah, Mr. Saltz has a comment?
All the money's been paid up, right? All your escrow accounts, everything's up to date? Supposed to be like one-third more if it's being, that's all taken care of, right?
Yes.
Okay.
At this point, anyone wants to second Mr. Pipola's motion?
I make a motion, second it.
Okay, Mr. Danielle has seconded the motion. Oh, okay, wait a second. Yes, to approve? Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Saltz?
Yes.
Mr. Peasey?
Yes.
Mr. Danielle?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Zink?
Yes.
This application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving along on our agenda, we don't have any study of land use regulation. I'll just see if there's anyone else from the public, any comments? Mr. Saltz has a comment.
I understand tonight is our chairwoman's birthday, so I just want to wish her a happy birthday. Everybody knows about it, happy birthday, doll.
I second that.
Five years cancer-free, so it's the best birthday ever.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, I'd also like to acknowledge Mr. Rubin's birthday today.
And there were a lot of resolutions. Okay, so I don't see any comments from the public.
Make a motion that we close public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And meeting adjourned. Happy nice birthday, Chair. Thank you. Wow, yes, yes.